Six o'clock, so we will call the order, the meeting of the New Palestine Planning Commission. If everybody would, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, unified, United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have the roll call, please?
Ted Malander.
Here.
Chris Monermont.
Here.
Here.
Phil Newman.
Here.
Ryan Hartley.
Here.
Brian Smith.
Here.
All right.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum, so we will proceed. The first item on our agenda is consideration of the minutes from our meeting of August 6th. So can I get a motion regarding the minutes from our August the 6th meeting, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve the planning commission minutes from August 6, 2025.
Is that seconded?
Okay, we have a second. So because it has been moved and seconded, it is now open for discussion. Are there any comments, concerns, edits? The minutes look pretty accurate to me. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the minutes from August 6th as presented in your backup materials, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, and the minutes are approved. The next item, under Old Business, is a discussion regarding the sidewalks, sprinklers, basketball goals, signage. Ryan, do you have anything on that this evening?
I don't. Chris and I have not had a chance to work on that, so I'll suggest we move that, keep it under Old Business and move it down the road. We did discuss that today, and we'll be working on that.
Okay, so how about a motion to table that item?
I'll make a motion to table the code review for sidewalk sprinklers, basketball goals, and signage.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and cited. Is there any discussion regarding the matter? All those in favor of tabling item 3.1, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The next item, now we are under New Business on our agenda, and that is consideration of an amendment to ordinance number. And let me defer and ask Brenda, it's 2025, what is the rest of the ordinance?
Go ahead.
Or whoever.
It's 082025.
Yes.
No ABCs?
No ABCs, and no 2025 in front of it. That should be marked out.
It's 0825.
Yep.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we refer to the ordinance correctly. So at this time, I think procedurally, we need a preliminary motion, and I will let Zach explain what the preliminary motion is.
Sure. Ordinarily, for zoning amendments of this nature, the petitioner is required to submit a petition to the planning commission 20 days in advance. But because this substantially complies with the existing zoning ordinance, you can just go ahead and waive that requirement. So what we'd ask is if you choose to do so, you do that by motion and vote, and then we can go ahead and hear the petitioner.
I will make a motion to waive the 20-day requirement.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, John.
So is there any discussion regarding that motion?
Yeah, I got a question about the term substantially comply. Is that, can you elaborate on that, or?
We've reviewed it. I mean, there's minimal changes, and we feel that it's fine to go ahead and waive that requirement. It's normally done so that the planning commission has time to review all the petitioner's submissions, but it's, there's minimal changes.
Okay, yeah, that was, that's one of my concerns that we can bring up later, but about the time, we talked about it last week, Bill, so.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, concerns regarding the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we'll waive the 20-day requirement, and we will now proceed with consideration. Ordinance number 082025, and I will yield the floor to whoever wants to make the presentation.
Thank you very much. Anything sworn in, or are you good?
Nope, just state your name for the record and your address, and have at it.
My favorite baseball team, and go on.
No, no, we know that.
But we'll get even. For the record, my name is Harold Gibson with Antac Health. I'm the Director of Property Development. Address is 6189 West John Monstrant Drive, Blue Hill. It's a pleasure to be here in front of the commission, many faces, and each is different than when we were here a few years ago. I'm not here alone with us is a very strong team from Proger, some from Milwaukee, some from Ohio, some from Indianapolis. And I'll let Mr. Bride introduce those in a few seconds, if that's all right. I probably would mispronounce a lot of names here, so. And I'll let you try, I'm not going to try. Well, again, thank you very much. I appreciate the consideration, and hearing this this evening, I can assure you that we have been communicating with staff some time on this. Proger's had meetings here with the town and staff, the Golden Minutetings, and it wasn't our intention to file anything related. That probably lies on my shoulders, because there's just so much here. But we appreciate the opportunity to present this amendment to you. Where should we start? I think it's appropriate for some of the, obviously proud, maybe new members, to think back just a few years ago. It was pre-COVID, 2018, 2019, and we're talking about the project at Healthway Park, South East Corner, 600 West, and US 52. This is what it looked like. In 2018, hospital, at that time, I was in my own firm, came to me and said, hey, we have a project, and we talked about buying some ground, we want to build a campus. We want to serve the folks of New Palestine and serve the great township, as well as we've been and better. At that time, you might remember, we had a small clinic, we were busting at the seams, and what we did was provide medical services here for the town. And so we started looking for some ground, and we looked at various places, but the place that we kept coming back to was the site that we're on now. Some of you may remember the storage facility that was there. Some of you may not. I even forget about it sometimes. We tore a storage facility down, and relocated east of town. That was here. We also bought a rental property along US 52. We bought 68 acres of farmland, and we ended up buying a second home. So there was quite an effort for the hospital to go through, to acquire the property, to begin development in what we now know as Healthway Park. At the time we started, zoning wasn't, it was annexed. Not all of it was annexed, by the way, I just recalled. We annexed some property, but the zoning was a mix of zonings. So it was our proposal to the town that we set up a unit development plan that was allowed by your zoning ordinance. And your zoning ordinance has a very extensive list of items in there for what you have to meet to become a UDP. You're going to hear that quite often tonight. Sometimes you may hear it, other people spell it as a PUD or a HUD. Your ordinance calls it a UDP, so we'll try to remember that and call it correctly. But what you see on the map here is basically our land use plan, which is the major component of the UDP. So here was our wellness center. We had a project at the time, and we knew where we wanted to go. That's how it looked, we included that. And then we have these colored areas. Area B is along 600 West. Area C, which is incorrectly labeled, it's labeled Area E, one of the things we're hopefully going to correct tonight. That was my fault. Not perfect, I know, but I was surprised you see that. So we have block C, which is detention pond, and area D. So that made up our master plan. As I said, one of the things we're going to ask you tonight is consider correcting that error, and correctly brought it to our attention very early on, that we had an area C, but it wasn't labeled on our plan. So we also presented you a land use, a development plan, of conceptually what that might look like. One of the things we're going to talk about in a second is a UDP is an advantage to develop, render municipality to work together for the future. It gives you creativity, it gives you flexibility. It's intended to be over a period of time, and here we are, seven years into this, we've got some things developed. But we also tonight ask you for a change, which is intended as part of the way the rules are written in the UDP. So you can see, we knew the wellness center was here. We had an idea that we were going to have several large retail businesses with smaller uses in it, and that hasn't came to fruition. Not good or bad, it just was a way that we had projected it out. We had some outlets along the south side of Leon Lane, and we continue to have our detention pond. So part of the UDP of that, I have hearing some of you, I hopefully, I know it was passed around, some of you may have read it. If you haven't, that's okay, I understand. It's very, very voluminous, and it's intended to be that way. The UDP says, basically, come to us and present us an ordinance, and we'll see if we can work together and get along with that, because our current zoning ordinance doesn't just quite fit the mold. So we build our own ordinance, and we get you to review it, and if you like it, we pass it. And that's what we, our governance, our 66 acres from that point on. So if you can list it down the left side, and I'm not going to go into them, are all the things that correlate specifically with your zoning code, those sections. Some apply, some don't. Some we wanted to amend, some we didn't. So you can see, there's like land use, number one, permitted uses. We struck out a lot of the permitted uses in the business districts, because it just didn't fit well with our wellness center that we proposed. You have lighting standards, residential standards, fruit trees, blood planes, many, many things that make up that unit development plan. Again, it goes right along with your zoning. You might notice that section 16 to section 27, we didn't change those. We went right along with your zoning code and said those still apply. So in part of the PUD, there it is, I called it, the UDP, you can see in yellow, it's intended to provide flexibility through the application of customary zoning regulations to promote physical development pattern of the community, including mixed-use development. So this is exactly what we have here. We have medical, we have office, we have retail, we have residential, a perfect mixed-use UDP plan to simplify the process. So we hopefully eliminate the variance process that might happen if you come in with a project that doesn't just fit all of the I's and the T's of a development code. So we eliminate the process of having to ask for variances on certain things. And I think it's important to notice that the planning commission has the right to continually review this from time to time, and allow for change circumstances and conditions unforeseen at the original time. This is not the first time we've done this. This is the second time we've done this. You might recall, our original plan did not allow for residential standards. We didn't think we would have any residential standards. Well, as we know, if you were involved in the amendment we did for Mohammed Bakovic, the residential project has assumed the break ground to the south of us, that 24 acres. We brought to you a proposal that established the design for those buildings, established the site plan, established the density, and we were very, very blessed that you all approved that. And that is the rules now that apply to that south of the break. And we did it through this process. We advertised, had a public hearing, had an ordinance, and I didn't learn from that ordinance, but I still put 2025 forward to label. It was marked out then, too. So under the unit development ordinance, it tells you all the rules and the things that we have to do. And one of the things that the zoning administrator can do is make minor changes. But one of the things that they cannot do is change the uses permitted. And what we're here tonight to talk about is a change in the use permitted. You're going to hear us introduce a fuel center to you. At the time in 2020, we did not permit fuel centers. So the zoning administrator is not allowed to make that change. Small changes, he's allowed to make through his own administrative amendment, but this, of course, is right along with your rules that we're here tonight presenting this. So the concept plan, we talked about that, that's important. In the event Area D is developed with two-family attached, multi-family residential site development, something substantially similar that I showed on the exhibit. A, that's what we did when we came in with the First Amendment. And as you can see there at the top, the correct ordinance number was 010522, and that was in January of 2022. We brought to you the First Amendment, and that was for the multi-family use that I just mentioned a little bit. Those were two-story residential apartments. Now, it's a little bit of secret rumor, I don't think it's a rumor anymore. I think Mr. Bakovic wants to change that. He wants to reduce the number of units, he wants to change to go to a three-story product. So he's going to be coming in shortly through us and asking you for a subsequent amendment to that. Times have changed, three years have passed, needs are different, conditions are different, so he will be doing that shortly. Since then, we have some activity going on at the site, and our land use plan is becoming, coming to fruition. So here's an example of a multi-tenant building that's under construction now that you see on Leon Lane and 600 West. And then here is the site as we know, things are headed down the pipe. This is Mr. Bakovic's apartment layout that we've seen. You haven't seen it yet. It's not presenting it tonight for approval, just trying to give you an idea of how this plan is evolving. This is the multi-tenant building that is under construction now. I believe there's five sites in that, I think a couple of them were leased out. We're getting significant interest for two lots along 600 West, from office space to medical space. Fast food restaurant is in a very popular use right now that are interested. We have daycare that is also interested and coming to the site. So interest is picking up, and I have to believe it's also at interest is not only because things are happening around town, but it's because of who's here with us this evening and who are happening here with us. So specifically, what is our request this evening? As I said already, number one, I need to make sure we correct our type O. There are no standards for Area E. If you looked through that book, and you were looking for Area E, you didn't find it. You found detention pond. Okay, so please consider that. We also are wanting to strike out some of our uses under Area C. So now I want to draw your attention, but we are going to focus in on Area C tonight. That's really what we're focusing on, we're not focusing on the other areas. We can be very specific in this use, and this amendment is catered and drafted to that area only.
Harold, just a second there. What page is that?
I'm sorry.
Just so you can follow at home here, so what page is that on?
I really, uh... So what I passed out, and I appreciate you interrupting me there on that, stopping me, because what we passed this evening is a red line version of what was filed, because we did find a few errors. So what's in front of you tonight is the latest version we'd like you to consider. And it's in red line to show you this, really, kind of insignificant changes, but we thought it was necessary to show you that. So what is on the page right there, string right there, 3.01, is on page two.
So what you've shown up till now has been off of this booklet?
Yes.
Let's hand it up. Okay.
Yeah. I should have explained that, I called it. So I just want to hit some of the highlights. So we are striking out, now that we're five years into this process, we know there are some uses that we thought would be good uses in 2020, that now we are happy to strike them out. So you can see greenhouse, crop production, research laboratories, industrial uses, we don't want those anymore. So in this amendment, we're saying you can't do that. In 2020, you could. Tonight, we're asking you to consider that, accept this amendment, but there you can't. Really, the main thing we want to talk about is adding the following permitted uses. And number one is a fuel center, and number two would be a shopping center of 95,000 square feet or more. Currently, a shopping center is permitted in Area C, if you allow me to call it that. It can't be any larger than 50,000 square feet. That's what we thought we wanted in 2020. Quite frankly, Area C by itself is only seven acres. It probably doesn't support anything more than 50,000 square feet. But because of what we're proposing tonight, we want to change that to 95,000 square feet or more, and we want to allow a fuel center. And I think it's important to consider when a fuel center can be used, and that is as an accessory use. We're not saying we want a fuel center there by itself. We're asking you to consider a fuel center with a primary use such as a supermarket or shopping center. So if I wanted to go down and operate a convenience store on Area C, I can't do that. If I follow that, it has to be an accessory use to a primary use, and that primary use is the pond. And then it sets up some standards, no overnight parking, no outside collection centers, various things like that that we feel are important to continue with raising the bar in the standards that we have there for the park. We added definitions to fuel center because you do not have a definition of fuel center in your zoning code. So we've added the definition of a fuel center, and you should see immediately, and again, these are numbered sections. Except if you want to flip through, you want to go back, it's in numerical order, so you can get to section 26 and see this. An accessory use to a principal supermarket or grocery store, just to highlight, again, it's there to dispense gasoline or diesel. No semi-tracker trucks are allowed to be parked there. It is allowed to have delivery trucks, delivery of gasoline and diesel products, and delivery trucks to the supermarket. There are other things in there that I will let Ann get into as far as the specific uses of the supermarket and fuel center. I'm not trying to steal her presentation at all. I've seen her in action, she does a great job of that. We've also added shopping center definition because we are in the process of acquiring the adjacent 48 acres, and this shopping center will take a part of the seven acres, and most of it will be on 48 acres to the site. So it'll be 15 to 17 acres in total for the shopping center. But it fits the definition of a shopping center with a fuel center. The fuel center has to have a primary use with it, so it can't be there by itself. So here's a site plan of Area C. Again, this is Area C, north is to the left, put better on the page, I'm, that doesn't confuse anybody. But here's the fuel center. Fuel center will be by the roundabout. You can see some of the land being that the engineers have predicted quite well. Fuel center is here, nine stations, four on the inside, one by the kiosk, total of 18 pumps. It would be out of Canada over it, access to Lloyd Wilson Way and off of West Leon Lane. And then again, the supermarket, grocery store, retail center, shown here. So that will qualify the site for a fuel center in this example that we presented. These are just some elevations of what the fuel center would look like. So in the UDP, we also establish development standards that deal with things like setback, parking spaces, landscaping, architectural features, height of canopy, design of canopy, signs, lighting. All of those components are in the UDP, and they're either specifically laid out in the ordinance before you this evening, or they are conceptually presented to you with the ability of the controlling developer, which is the hospital, to continue discussions with, in this case, Proger, and finally design that. They can get better, but they can't get less stringent. The kiosk, there's a typical kiosk that you see around. These are going to be masonry exteriors, just another example, and again, Ann will detail this in much, much greater depth than I can. Here's an example of what the elevations of the Proger will look like, very, very nice. This is a new prototype for them, so if you've been around and seen Progers, you've probably seen various front façades that have different gables, different roof types, gables, hips, two stories, whatever the case may be, depending on geographically where it's at as well. So I'll save more of that for Ann. We will be proposing that the entry signs be modified. Rather than have a separate sign for the supermarket, we decided it would be best if we modified the existing one. And I can take no credit for this. Ms. Ramsey and her sign company did a fabulous job of taking, this is the existing sign right there. We're going to add Proger logo with the gasoline pricing signs, and then we'll put tenant labels, links to this area, and then we'll have a way to park to the bottom.
Harold, if I can interrupt you just briefly. So this evening, you handed out an amended document, and I just want to point everybody's attention to page 12. And the document that was handed out this evening, because one of the questions that I had, and I think that this page 12 answers, on the prior draft that we received, page 13, I had a note to ask what this would actually look like, because on page 13 of the original document, there are some very rough drawings, but it doesn't really show what it's going to look like. but it doesn't really show what it's going to look like. There's some labeling. So I appreciate the fact, and you must have been reading my mind, and probably everybody else's mind.
I had the same question.
To what does that look like? So adding page 12 in the new handout is very helpful. So thank you.
Well, you're welcome. We're happy to be able to provide that. I can't take a lot of credit for it except the Kroger team. And please understand, we wanted to be a little more complete in detail. And Ann was really trying to get you to be that way. But they're busy with other stores as well and other municipalities. And their team, like I said, from Milwaukee and Ohio, they have other zoning places they have to get to. And then they have their architects and their engineers. And at the time that we filed this, we just didn't have as much together as we did now. So I appreciate the time, extra time that we had. The good news is, again, signage is important in your zoning code. Signage is important to our UDP. Some of these examples that I show you would not comply with your zoning code relative to signs because of size and square footage. Most zoning codes do not allow development signs of this nature, and they restrict you on the size of signage. Therefore, we've added this in the unit development plan. So there is no reason to go for a variance. Now, you can certainly say, we don't like that size. If you have that opportunity, we'll have to consider if we can change that or not. But when we present this to you, we're really presenting it in a way that that is the standard that we're going to be held to. And in the ordinance, there are many, many pages on sign standards and details that gives you the dimension and things, more so than I'm just presenting on this page. So this is the overall site plan, Area C, West Line is in this point. And you can see this is the overall site plan for the supermarket. Again, I'll save that for Ann. But I do want to point out that one of the things we're asking for is an elimination of landscape buffer. So in the beginning, when we had the 60 acres, when we had the overall 60 acres, this was our West Line, we were requiring whoever developed this to have a landscape buffer with the neighbors to the west. We didn't know what else to do. So we said, okay, if we can develop this, we got to put a landscape buffer there. Well, now that we know the proposal is to expand to the west, there's no reason now that landscaping will provide through the middle, Area C, and our property to the west. So we're deleting it if it's developed as a fuel center and a supermarket. So if something would happen that this plan wouldn't go forward, and it's not developed as a fuel center, it's developed as an office park, that buffer would still have to be there. So, but we're deleting it if it's developed as a fuel center. Thank you, Charles.
And again, that's because, as originally designed, that landscaping buffer would be right through the middle of the store.
It'd make it hard to shop.
Unless you're shopping trees.
Okay.
It could make a nice courtyard. I don't know. They're pretty good.
It could.
Put some apple trees in.
Generally, just the concept of eliminating landscaping isn't well-received. But here, I think that might make some sense.
It normally is not. So the last thing, and then I'll move out of the way, is I think the other folks have more exciting things to say. This is the 40 acres that, 48 acres that we have, in the process of acquiring, we think got help. Because when Kroger came to us, we didn't have enough land to support them. So we agreed, we went out and were able to acquire, agreed upon this. And this gives you the, the overall site will be extending Leon Lane to the west. We'll be building detention ponds to the west. Actually, the grade directs really nicely to the sheds to the west, the sheds to the east. All of this room, stormwater drainage in Area C, was already decided to go into the pond. It's a beautiful thing. The store will be extended, and then we'll come up with a UDP zoning ordinance that will hopefully be presented to you next month that will cover and govern the 40 acres. And it will obviously be much like that volume that I showed you in a few seconds ago. So that gives you the whole plan. And at this time, I will just refer to Ms. Bright. She can share lots of plenty.
Just a question for the landscape and the site.
Harold, just a question here.
No, I just wanted to say, so where the landscape buffer is and where you're going over, that will fall behind where the current hardware store is?
That buffer will stop at north of Area C and south of Area C. That's the only place that we're deleting it. So it will still be in existence, north of that and south of that.
I guess, what about the west line over there? I think that's the question. To the west, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that the question? I'm sorry.
So that, right there.
Yeah. So there would be no reason for us to put a landscape buffer here. We're not proposing one there. We're proposing that the landscape plan look like that as there's a sub-street plan to the north. So Kroger agrees to landscape that area along that street. So that'll act as a nice buffer between the use, whatever that is, to the west.
Well, I believe that's the hardware store, correct? To the west?
No, to the north.
No.
Hardware store is for the north.
Oh, I see.
The west is just land for now.
Yeah. Does that answer? Maybe doesn't sound like I did a good job.
My question is, does the, the drive that handles best in sight and the businesses that are in there in the hardware store, there is, is that going to connect?
So maybe the drive to get back to the hardware store is right here? That we, I can tell you, we had conversations with the landowner, and we were unable to come to terms with that purchase, with us connecting and having Leon Lane connect Floyd Wilson Way and extensive study that we did with Indianapolis Transportation. I definitely believe they probably wouldn't like the idea of this just not connecting because of the limited space between those two drives. So I can tell you, we did ask the question. There was a time through our meetings and working through this with Kroger that that was considered. There's been a lot of things considered. It just didn't work out, so.
And this is probably a good point for me to, and I apologize that I didn't do this at the very beginning. So procedurally, what's going to happen? We're going to allow Harold to make his presentation. Anyone from Kroger to further present regarding the request. And then we're going to open the floor to the public for any public questions or comments. So there will be an opportunity for anybody in the public that would like to speak on the matter to do so. And then, once that has happened, then we'll do our deliberations and make any decisions that we want to make this evening. So again, I apologize, I should have stated that earlier so that public comment will be received.
Okay. Thank you.
Harold, it was a tough act to follow, but I'm going to do my best. My name is Ann McBride. My address for the record is 5721 Dragon Way, Cincinnati. I'm part of the Ohio contingency, 45227. With me this evening, I have representatives of Kroger Facility Engineering that's located here in Indianapolis, Kroger Real Estate, who have come down from Milwaukee, Wisconsin for this evening's meeting. We also have folks from Midland Atlantic, who's the brokerage firm, as well as representatives from Kimberly Horn, who's the civil site engineer, in case you set up some questions that way. So they're all available for questions if there are things that I can't answer, but I will try first, okay? So Kroger is really excited about the possibility of being a part of this development that Hancock Health has created. It's a very, it's a very exciting opportunity for them to be a part of the community and a part of this development in particular. They are proposing to develop a Kroger Marketplace store on approximately about 16.7 acres of this development. The site is bounded to and accesses to South Roy Wilson Way to the north and northeast, so to speak, not straight north-south, and also has access, as I think Harold mentioned, on Wesleyan Way to the south. The development that Kroger is proposing for this site, and you'll hear more about this in the months and so forth to come if the project is allowed to go forward, would be for a new Kroger prototype. This is actually the first one. I've been doing Kroger work for 35 years or so. This is the first time I've done one of these stores. It's kind of exciting to have a new one to play with. It's a 99,000 square foot Kroger Marketplace store. It would have features such as the Murray Cheese Department, which is really fabulous. They have sushi that they make on site a lot of times. They have a lot of ready-to-go meals, salads, and things that you can take home to heat up if you're running late or you don't feel like cooking tonight, which would be me. Expanded deli, obviously seafood and meats, produce and so forth. And then seasonal items, depending, like right now, the Halloween candy is coming in. Not Christmas decorations yet, which is good. So this is, as I mentioned, Kroger's newest store type and design. Harold showed you some elevations of what the store would look like, and I'll talk about that in a minute. But this is all new. This is, you guys are getting the first shot at this, so that's exciting too. There is also proposed adjacent on the east side of the Kroger, a 30,000 square foot retail building. That tenant isn't known. It's not, I'm not disclosing it. We just don't know who that is, right? So on the east side, though, of the site, as you can see over, I'm sorry, east side of the site, is the Kroger fuel center. And Harold talked a little bit about that. It does have a canopy over. You can see that on the, on the site plan. And underneath there, there are nine double-sided dispensers. So there's 18 points of obtaining fuel overall on the site, okay? There is a kiosk, which would have a Kroger associate in it. And that, the colors, the building materials and so forth, would match those used on the store, as will the columns for the canopy and so forth. The canopy itself is 19 feet to the top of that, but the lower end of that is 15 feet six inches. And the reason for that is, it keeps the semis out, okay? So unlike maybe some of the speedways or some of the other things you see, and, well, they're not intending to, but they've got cheap diesel. And so if somebody can get their truck in there, they're not going to get a truck under the Kroger canopy. Because I know that is a concern sometimes by some of the communities that we locate in. So it's designed that way for a purpose, okay?
So Ms. McBride, can I ask a question? I know you said that this is a new prototype. Has a similar building been built anywhere else? Because when I, and the reason I'm asking is, if we wanted to go and look and see, what would be the...
Around Thompson Road.
Now, the elevation, it's the same as the 106th.
116th in Allisonville, okay?
But, but that is a larger store. It's a 123,000 square foot store. So if you go in, it's not, it's not going to appear as big, I guess, because this is 99,000. It's a whole new...
But it's similar on the elevation.
Materials, colors.
Yes.
Fuel center, also similar to what we would be getting.
And maybe it's not fair to hit you with pop questions, but at 116th in Allisonville, how many pumps are there? Okay. And again, I know that was a pop quiz, so...
Well, we'll let you know later if you passed or not, okay? Because we can pull it up in the car, and we'll, we'll let you know.
So Ann, you said that was 123,000 square feet?
Yeah, the stonefish is, yes.
Yet the elevations all the way around it are... Okay, very good.
Just a little bit smaller. And I think it's important to note, like, for example, on the, in the detail that's gone into this, on the kiosks, the mechanical equipment that's mounted on the roof will be screened, just like the mechanical equipment on the building will be screened from view. So you're not going to see anything that you really don't want to see. There is a dumpster enclosure, I'm not tall enough, in that location. And that is because everybody, myself included, these guys have heard me say this a thousand times, what do you do? You get rid of the empty diet coke can when you, you know, get gas. So we want to make sure that that's properly handled on site. That will be in a masonry enclosure with solid gates. And then there's landscaping around it on three sides. So that will be very well screened. There is some limited outdoor display, and I think you have examples of some of that. You know, there was a time when everybody had stacks of mulch top with me and so forth. All of this information, with the exception of the propane cage, because it can't be under a building because of the contents. But, and it is located up there. It is also screened on three sides by landscaping, the propane cage. But all of the other limited outdoor display in that area will either be in coolers like pop or snacks, that kind of thing, or even like the firewood will be in, I think they're maybe rubber-made, I don't know, containers that come down and they all lock in the evening. The windshield washer, squisher, and the oil and stuff, again, in a cabinet that comes down. So there's not a lot of, I'm just going to say sloppy, stuff on site, okay? It's all within, under the canopy, save the propane cage and within contained spaces, okay? And again, those details are in the information that Harold provided to you. The parking that will be required by your code for this site is 645 spaces for the retail uses. And then we are providing 640, oh, sorry, 673 spaces. So slightly over, but not significantly over where you'd be thinking, oh, it's going to be a sea of asphalt. And we can talk about that in a minute. There are also nine spaces that are provided per your code for the fuel center. They're located up there at the northernmost part of the fuel center. We do exceed the number of required ADA spaces for the store. And they are located, you see them there in the white, they're kind of in the center of the store so that they have easy access and so forth to the main entryway to the store. Access, as I mentioned briefly before, is through an existing curb cut to the south on Wesleyan Lane. That exists today, is going to be widened to accommodate additional traffic. And then also a curb cut on South Roy Wilson Way, which is going to align with an existing curb cut, as you can see there. So there's no offset intersections or anything like that. It's all, all been aligned and vetted by the traffic engineers at Kroger. Some of the features, though, I do want to point out to the planning commission. There will be, on the west side of the building, a pharmacy pickup window, which is great if it's snowy and that's all you're going in for, you got sick kids and you don't want to lug them into the store. And that would have over five stacking spaces. And it also will have an escape lane. So if you get in and it's 6 o'clock and it's January and everybody's got the flu and you don't want to wait, you want to go into the store, you're not trapped. You're going to go around there and come back after the park. And also, on the southern part here, down at this end, will have the online shopping pickup area. So that is, if you care to order your groceries online and you get a time to pick them up, you would go there into one of those spaces, follow the instructions on the sign, and then an associate will come out of a door that you see that little notch on the building. Associate will come out of there. The order will be prepared, and it will be either in an ambient, a cold or frozen locker, and that food's delivered, it's put directly into your trunk, and payment is made. So, so that's a nice feature, particularly if you're a working mom with little kids and that kind of thing. So both of those features then are on the west side of the building. And there's 15 of those pickup spaces. I don't think I mentioned that. Loading is to the south, the rear of the building. There would be three loading docks there to the south. And then also, the Kroger store itself doesn't have dumpsters. It has a compactor that handles all the waste for the store. And that is internal, that is just south of the three loading spaces. And we'll talk about how that's going to be screened in a moment because that was, Hancock Health wanted to make sure that that was not going to be visible, so we say, from Wesleyan Lane. So I'll talk about that when I get to the landscaping, if that's okay. But anyway, that's where that's located. So speaking of landscaping, what you're seeing here today actually exceeds the requirements of your code and of the UDP. It's all the way around, see the extensive landscaping around the fuel center? Because that was another concern. They didn't want the fuel center to be the main feature of this development. So there is a lot of landscaping there. To the south of the stores I was talking about, there are loading docks there. And they will have a berm, an earthen berm. And I think the engineers are still trying to work out exactly how tall, whether it's two, three, or two feet or three feet, but somewhere in that area.
And where, where will that berm be?
That berm is going to be along, along here.
Okay.
Okay. And then on top of that, then, there's going to be a mixture of deciduous and non-deciduous trees and shrubs. So that will be heavily screened.
I do have a question. The area around the fuel center, there on the east side of the fuel center that wraps around, is that flat or is that bermed up as well?
No, that is, that is shown as, I won't say it's flat, but it's not, there's no berm in that location.
Okay.
Twenty, there we go. Now I get too many things to handle here. Okay. So as I mentioned, and there is going to be a mixture of plant material, but deciduous and non-deciduous in terms of trees. And we did submit a plant listing, but it's things like maple, oak, pine, cedar, and then deciduous, a variety of deciduous and non-deciduous shrubs. There's perimeter landscaping, as you can see, going all the way around the site and around, and then around the parking area. And then within the VUA... and around, and then around the parking area and then within the VUA, there are. Funny to be this short, isn't it? Anyway, there are islands at the ends of every parking row as required. The only exception to that that we have requested is these two ones that have the ADA spaces because it makes it difficult for folks that are in a wheelchair or using one of the mobile shopping carts, you know, with the scooter on it, it makes it difficult for them. So we are asking for, for an exception to that. And then interior VUA islands are as required. Each one of those would have at least two trees and some shrubs in them, so it's, it's going to be a pretty well planted parking lot and so that kind of gets back to my comment about not being a sea of asphalt. I mean, if you look at that, you can see that there's trees around it, there's trees inside of it and there's the trees at, at the end of each parking row. Okay, lighting, there are requirements within this development to, for the use of decorative poles and decorative light fixtures. And what Kroger is going to be doing is they are going to be locating those around the perimeter of the site to be consistent with the rest of the development and they will be using LED down directional lights within the parking field itself that are going to be lower than Kroger's typical fixtures are, but it gives a more even lighting with the store. You know, you've got a lot of moms that are coming out pushing a bass cart, maybe a three year old in Tobeside at, you know, it's dark in, in December at five o'clock, six o'clock. You want to make sure that that parking lot is well lit and that people feel safe and comfortable going in and out. So, so that's the lighting for, for the site. Store design, it does include a variety of materials. You do have some elevations in your packet. They are using a variety of shades of gray and cream and so forth, very, very neutral, very earthtonish kind of side colors. Some of the building materials include things like intricately colored CMU and that's important that it is that and not just regular CMU painted because the integral color doesn't, you don't paint it, it doesn't peel, it doesn't, you know, it's, it's like permanent material kind of thing, permanent color. And some legrits, some metal accents and so forth, enough to kind of make it a new fresh design, but not so over the top that you're going to say, oh yeah, that's that store that, that they did in 2025. Yeah, right, okay. So, and again, as I mentioned, various shades of gray, green, slate and so forth. Mentioned that the roof mechanicals for both the store and the, the kiosk will be screened from view. And I guess finally, I would just like to make the commission aware of the fact that what you're seeing up here is about a $35 million investment of Kroger into your community. And it is the creation of about 300 associate positions, full time and part time, which again represents a significant commitment from Kroger to your town. So that's my deal. I'm happy to try to answer questions and if I can't, I've got folks who can.
I got one on the lighting, so on page 40, exhibit J of the newest handout, it shows two types of lights, lights A and lights B. I, I drove the area because this was interesting to me and I think the standard that was set by the, the health bar already is very similar to light type B and it seems like those are being used around the perimeter of the area, but in the new area or the, I mean, from the line over, the new purchase area, it's all light type A. I think one of my comments is I would prefer to see it be consistent with the standard that was set previously to carry that through that whole area.
So I think maybe the exhibit should show that the, I understand that the thought was the type E lights, again, which are used extensively throughout the development, would be in this entire area and would go around the perimeter of the site and that would include across the, the north property line there. And I think this exhibit is not showing that carried out. It's showing it as all type A. The type A are, are, oh, okay, sorry, sorry. Harold's my guide here. If you turn, if you turn to the very next page, exhibit J, you can see where these are. That was the intent, was to use those on the front. But it is a little confusing with the other exhibit.
Yeah, I mean, both of them I think depict it well. I, I guess my concern is you'd have a, a very nice decorative look around the outside, but then inside it wouldn't carry through.
Yeah, but again, you know, you've got a, I have a very odd right to say, I'm a real sacred person for Kroger. So to your point, this, so all we're presenting before you today is just the amendment for C and so this exhibit only detailed out that where the B lights would be on exhibit C. If you look super closely, there are additional B lights along the backside of the Kroger store and along the western edge. So all of the lights along the south line, there's one, two, three, four additional B lights along the south side of the Kroger parcel. And then there's B lights along the western edge of the Kroger. So it is like Anne was referring to, it is all, all along the perimeter, but because today's discussion was just about, we only called it out for the area C, which may have been.
So looking at page 40, at the top, it says type A lights, there's one arrow. So how many type A lights are proposed? And, you know, I see the boundary for area C, but it's probably as good a time as not, as any to ask, even as it carries over to the west on the area that needs to be added. How, can you tell me how many type A lights are proposed?
Oh, can you tell me? Sorry, I did not count the light fixtures, guys. Well, Ellen's counting those, so I do need to correct one thing. Somebody had asked, would there be a berm around the fuel center? There is a berm around the fuel center, I'm sorry, I missed.
And when you say berm, meaning a mound?
Earthen mound, yeah, with the landscaping on top, so I'm sorry, that was mine. Sixteen.
So there's 16 type As.
He's an engineer, he can count to 16.
So I count nine Bs.
There's eighteen, so basically B goes around the, the exterior.
Right.
Excluding the north section from C to the new area.
Right.
So all of the As are where the trees are in the islands?
The As are within the parking area where it needs to be more brighter illuminated because of the activities, right? And then to keep the feel of the development, those fixtures are intended to be around the rim, okay?
Well, I would say, I actually went to two of your Fisher stores and I also went to the store in Melville and I'm kind of like chat, you know? I've seen all the lights on the inside, but I did see that all the developments, all the boulevards and everything were decorative lights, so I see the theme that you guys kept. That particular light, I just wasn't sure why, so. Decorative lights, they are very honest.
And that's why we would do it down on the front. Most visual access.
Well, and while we're talking about the lights, I can share that not even in this development, the fact that the hospital set the bar so high that subsequent developments off-site, like Taco Bell, Starbucks, Jiffy Lube, all have the decorative lights along the roadway, so, you know, at least there's a standard that's been set. So.
Yeah, and I think one of the, the questions was changing the height, which I don't think is a, is a bigger issue. I think the, the look, you know what I mean, is, is kind of what we're going to. A lot of what, we just went through a planning, or, gosh.
Comprehensive plan?
Comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
And a lot of, a lot of the feedback we got was keeping the small town feel, keeping that, that approach and I think this is a small touch that I think would bode well is to try to keep that small town approach to it.
And the perimeter lights again are shorter. The lights that would be in the, in the parking area are a little taller, but the, the trade off you get is if you go shorter in there, you're going to have a lot more, and you're going to have a lot more hot spots, okay? Where the light's going to come down and it's going to start to eat into how many street meter parking requirements. We're going to start to lose, you know, islands with landscaping. So, you know, it's kind of a balancing act, guys.
Yeah, the, the height I think doesn't bother me, understanding that they're going to be higher, I would just prefer to see them as the, consistent to what's already in the, the park, other developments that have been in the area in there.
Just one question, aren't, the decorative ones are usually black, right?
Yes.
And then the ones that are in the parking lot are normally silver?
Uh, they're usually popery kind of.
Yeah, well, they blend in a little bit better than, like, the black one would stick out like a small, I think.
Well, if it's a nice looking thumb.
No, they're not. Yeah.
Anybody have any other questions I can try to answer or somebody here else can answer?
I, I had a question about the, the front elevation. I mean, if we could talk about the, the front elevation of the store a little bit. I noticed in.
Wow, I'm reading. December 30th. We've already seen. Cut up page 16 and 17.
Yeah, that's, that's more where I was going. That, yeah, that, that area that wraps around kind of in a upside down C shape around the store, I believe it was referred to as EF1. It's, it was kind of call it out to be a Downey gray. I noticed, I found some, and I, and I know they're not exactly the same, but I found some images of some of your other stores, like your Brownsburg and your Fisher store, and I noticed they had a, it was, it was like a wood appearance. It was called a longboard V something and it was painted like a cherry, cherry wood. Is, would it be possible to, to do something like that instead of gray? And, and I also noticed that this, the Brownsburg store had a, a small canopy on the front, so this is the Fisher store.
Yeah. The Fisher store, the canopy, north beach, ocean, traffic. The way the background, um, so that's why we changed it to gray, but I can't find that.
Okay. And, and the other question was the CMU, that's, that's basically concrete block, right? Is it, do you, is it possible to get that in brick instead of block? I mean, would, would anybody think brick would, would look a little nicer than block or?
Oh, yeah.
Just a thought.
The only thing you want to be careful of in a community with a brick is on a building facade this long and a building this big.
That's a lot of brick.
It is.
It's kind of hard to do brick.
I mean, I've had other communities add and, and come back and say, okay, you should have one and they're like, oh, no, that's not what we meant. It wasn't what we thought we were going to get, so.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Well, I, I just, the, the gray is just, it's very, very plain. Just, just a thought. I, I know that there's been blue done in other stores and we're not really a blue, but.
They just got love blue, though. I mean, it's fur.
I understand that, but.
No.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Now's the time.
It is. It's your Allison store. Yes. That's my thought. The brown, okay, I like that. I get it, huh?
I have, I have one question on the request, I think it was the number nine, 5.6, was a section, 5.6E, about loading berth docks and delivery service space standards? And it said amended by deleting and replacing it with the following, no off-street loading docks shall be located on the front facade of any building other than if the shopping area is developed on area C and when in compliance with all other provisions of this ordinance. So are they, are you saying that if there are other shops, that there would be front loading dock areas?
Well, the, the rear, I mean, the store is kind of unusual because it has multiple front yards, you know, because of the shape of the property, right?
Right.
And so the south, the rear elevation of the store where because of the, you know, handling, delivery of food and the handling and packaging and to the, to the store itself, has to be done toward, toward the back, that's their whole back of house area, right? So that loading dock has to be to the rear, that is technically a front yard from a zoning scene, right? And so that issue, we're asking that that be amended, but as I explained before, to properly screen that, so you're not going to see that from the, from the roadway, there's going to be an earthen mound and then landscaping on top of that.
So there won't be trucks pulling up to the front of the Kroger store and unloading through the front door?
No.
Okay.
I don't see an explanation for that. Explaining that, but under any other condition, if this was not a Kroger store, and actually if this would become another competitor, they would have to go forward, we're going to have to come back in here and get another amendment because this plan is the rule. So if there was a retail store by itself or an office store that had a loading dock along Lee on Lane, that would be in violation of our rules and it would not be allowed. That's why we have to specifically address this because it said it has both of the front yards and they're not allowed in the front. So unless, if it, if an office store would ask to have a dock only on Lane, right now it would not be permitted, so we have to bring that to you as an amendment. If it is the hospital, we'll allow it. But because of the commitments they're making, we are writing that in the UDT amendment to be allowable under those conditions.
And then I would like to ask just to make sure because, again, the bar was set so high with the wellness center and when you come out of the wellness center and you look to the south, or if you're in a vehicle and you're traveling south off of US 52, you showed two different landscaping areas around the fuel center? And I'm, I'm trying to find the, the page, I apologize, I'll, page 20. Page 20. So now what we have, our page 20, it's just shown in hatched areas, but want to make sure that if, if you're either walking in the parking lot at the wellness center or driving on the roadway, the landscaping is going to be sufficient, whether it's mounded or the density, that along that roadway, you're not going to see the pumps or the trash cans, the outdoor vending items. And, and that's again, because it's not a 3D and there isn't a picture from the roadway looking to see what the landscaping would look like, I, I just want to ask, is there any assurance that there will be sufficient screening so that you're not seeing the fuel center unobstructed?
So I think if you're going south, Jeff said, off of South Roy Wilson Way or coming out of that office, so you're going to see a mixture of deciduous and non-deciduous trees there.
And it'll be mounded.
And then all of this around here is, is burned and also, okay? So, I need to say it was a burn, but it's been charged to you.
Well, and, and people will know it's there.
I know.
And, and, you know, the.
Because they've heard me say this about them. What is the last thing the Kroger associates does to you when you check your, you check your? You have, asking them the fuel points, right? And so because the majority of trips to the fuel center are in any Kroger fuel center, maybe there's exceptions, but in any rate, the majority of those trips are, are, I tied to a trip to the store.
And Ms. McBride, this, this might not be a fair question, but I'll ask it anyways. So if you have your fuel points, do you have any guess what your price per gallon would be in contrast to the get-go that's nearby? Will it be similar, cheaper?
Is there a get-go on your lot? You're not going to be wanting to go there.
Well, see, right now it's the only place to go.
Yeah.
Well, no, it isn't. Speedway is another place.
Well, I mean, I think everybody in the room knows gas is very expensive, right? And so the three percent, three percent you get off automatically typically, my experience, is that it lowers a little with the, with the regular prices for everything else, so.
Okay. Again, I'm trying to get you to quote, a gas price might not be a fair question.
They're going in for these guys for like 35, 36. I am not. Anybody else have any questions?
My, my favorite picture of a gas price is a dollar eighty-five a gallon. I just want to hold you to it.
No, I have had, I tried to do that when it was like sixty-four cents. Wait, that happened? And I, and I think it's.
Well, these this these fourteen, these seventeen points that you put together, Bill, I know Harold addressed some of these, but I don't know if we have time to go through all seventeen of those, make sure we get.
I'd say anything you have a question on.
Okay, so let's just go through the list here, which what was covered by Harold and what wasn't, and let's talk through through these lineups. All right, so the new concept plan, and we talked about that. Number two is districts are relettered.
Here to talk about that's that's moving E to C.
Cause he didn't have a C.
Didn't have an E.
Certain permitted uses are deleted.
Yep, he went through that. And then certain are added.
Right, and so that was the one where we had had fifty thousand square feet prior in 2020. And one of the changes here that you're proposing is the ninety-nine.
Well, plus thirty. And and I guess this also is as good a time procedurally to to mention. I'm used, I'm like Harold, I'm used to most jurisdictions calling it a PUD, Planned Unit Development. And in a PUD, a developer comes in and says, here's our master plan. But that's all conceptual of the entire, let's say it's a hundred acres. They know what's gonna go on twenty of the acres. Eighty of the acres, there's a hypothetical guess, and that's exactly what the original UDP did. It's in concept, here's an overall project. And with the first amendment, today's the second amendment, each time reality doesn't match with a hundred percent what was guessed, then you come in and you amend it. So it is very common for your PUD or UDP to be amended over time because once you have an actual user, then you see how it fits and where it doesn't. And and that's where, you know, like, because I made a summary sheet, and that's where like number three and number four, number five, number six, number seven, um, you know, all of those are the natural product of now we're looking at a fuel center and a fuel center was never contemplated. So I think there's a lot of adjustments for a fuel center, and as long as it's properly landscaped and you get your Kroger points and you got your free six pack of Pepsi Minis with a rotisserie chicken, then then life is good.
This is the anomaly you will never see. He drinks either, does not care.
Does not care. But the free pack of Minis is a hit. So but so are there any other items on the list? Or should we just go through all of them?
Well, I mean, I think the list states all the changes that they're basically asking for, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I think the I just want to make sure we're covering this. The light pole height Chad brought up, landscaping was brought up, fuel center, et cetera, so.
Well, and and earlier I heard Chad discussing the possibility of changing the type A lights to type B lights. Is that something that you feel strongly about, Chad?
Yeah, I think I think because it's already there, right, in the standard set, I I think that being carried over, I get, you know, I counted them too, because I'm allowed to count. I took my shoes off, but there's sixteen A and eighteen B. Like, I guess to me, I I would like to see it just carry the same lighting across that was set in the original standard. I don't really understand the change of it. The height makes total sense, right? You gotta elevate it for those areas to get the the coverage that you need. But the look of the the Hancock Health Wellness Center, I think, is something that we want to continue to preserve. And that's the standard that but I would like to see through that area.
My only issue would be the amount. I agree with you on on the consistency in liking the other lights better. But my concern is safety in the parking lot when it's. Are they are they going to be the same height?
We have not even looked at incorporating that after the fixtures within the parking lot.
No, I mean, I mean, the other, the A and B, the ones that are planned at this point. The lights, they would not be the same height?
Don't kind of match up those two bull parts now. If I get into chat, the Kroger folks have been faggot. One of the commitments that we've made to the towns, Hancock Health wants this to be upscale. We want to be in front of you with a project that we're satisfied with and a developer that we're satisfied with. The Kroger folks have done that, although there's still room for us to approve and negotiate and look at plans. I've talked to Ms. Ramsey today. This has got a lot to go. This has a long process, and we're gonna be back in front of you for various reasons and things. And I can tell you that it's not our desire to be against anything that the town may not want to be in that position. We'll work hard with Kroger to make sure that what we present to you in finality is where everybody's happy with. We have to review final plans and and the ordinance. Ms. Ramsey was agreeable today, add that the controlling developer will have final approval. And every process, every permit that comes through Mr. Robinson's desk has to have an ACC approval of our architectural control committee, which is made up of about four different people. So we're here to partner with you a long, long time. Kroger's here to make that same commitment, and I would hope there's a level of trust that we have with each other that best foot's gonna be took forward, and you have our commitment that it's gonna be done. There's a lot to this. We don't expect you to look at every detail tonight. It's more or less, it's more than the concept, but it's the rules. And we've done our best to give you as much as we give you this time, and Kroger's spending thousands of dollars already committed to the project. And we'll find a way to make these questions go away with good answers.
Yeah, and I'll be blunt. I'm a direct communicator, so it's nothing. I think the town's excited. Most of the people I've talked to are extremely excited about the opportunity to bring Kroger in here. So I don't want anybody to take anything I'm saying negative. It's just trying to keep a standard, right? And and I think, to your point, I think everybody here is committed to to working together to to make something like this happen and continue to grow our community in the right way.
All those fixtures are the same height. So sorry, that's why we see here is correct. So and yes, we are all the same.
So if the decorative ones are at the the highest elevation, which I think is thirty-two feet. So is there any difference in the lighting between the decorative and the non-decorative? So the decorative aren't.
Well, there's also, and this is a question of mine, different hours of operation as far as the wellness center.
Just my personal opinion, I think we can work through the light issue.
Yeah.
Definitely not willing to deny that, so.
These are minimalists. Yeah, they always go up. So we will work hard as a team to present the the best product when it's all done.
I think so.
Well, and and seeing the changes that were made, you know, that we hadn't seen before this evening, talking about the controlling developer. I I certainly will say for the record that we defer a lot to the hospital's judgment, again, knowing the investment, the quality, and I can only assume, just guessing, that wellness center is probably the most frequented wellness center that you have in your system. I hope that's the case.
If it does, my wellness is getting better, so that's what we want. And so.
I will say, let me just add in here, the the document, the ordinance that was prepared by a hotel, I suspect, and adopted by the city is more stringent than most known codes that I work with. I will call them. So I'm just saying, that's that's a type very detailed.
But we appreciate the quality.
Yep.
So absolutely.
I just want to add on what Chad said. I think that I think Kroger's is a certainly has a really good reputation. I grew up out southeastern Indiana, a town called Aurora, very close to Cincinnati. So I grew up going to Kroger grocery stores and the and the community involvement there, support is goes a long way. So Kroger certainly has a has a history of a of a quality corporation, so I appreciate you guys being here. One of the things that I I'm concerned about, though, is, and I know you three that have been on the town council have been closer than this to this than I have and maybe others. I'm just a little concerned about the process here. We started, we got to know about this meeting last Tuesday. I was out of town this past weekend on a conference. I didn't get back till late Monday night. I didn't really have the time to to review this like I typically do. And then we got some red lines tonight. I I guess I would feel better if we consider the continuance for 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 two weeks. That would give us time to look at the Kroger up on and and Fishers and.
But the RDC takes thirty minutes. And we so we do six, six thirty. So we go at six thirty.
How long do we have to advertise?
Yeah, we'd need to advertise a public hearing again. I believe that's twenty days. In this instance, it was, or you know, it's actually ten days. It's ten days.
If we continue the public hearing, we have to readvert?
Uh, yeah, because that we'd have to give the opportunity another.
Well, I I let's kind of take it one step at a time. Chris, if you want to make a motion to continue the matter, we'll see what the will of the planning commission is.
Okay, I I make a motion that we continue this for fourteen days.
Okay, the motion fails for the lack of a second. So are there any other motions?
Well, on that note, I think that it might, because it it did seem that it was moving fast to me when it all came about, but I think a lot of that is because Hancock had a lot of background, Heather Ducks in a Row, Kroger's large enough that they had a lot going on. I'm sure there was a lot before it was ever brought to us. And some of the things that we've had over the past few years have not been well coordinated and have dragged on four times longer than they needed to.
Sure.
So this does seem fast.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and consider the matter, but at this point, we need to open the floor. So if there's anybody in the audience that would like to make any comments, questions, concerns, come up to the podium, give us your name and your address, and share with us anything you'd like to share. Come on up to the podium and give us your name and address and anything you'd like to share.
My name is Trevor Lloyd Jones. I have property in the area and several parcels and properties. And I am a little bit surprised about the rush to get this done with very little notification. I'm no green, I'm not sure if the hospital has received all the green cards and if that even counts. If do they have all the green cards received from the neighbors that are obligated to be notified? There's, I certainly would have liked to have one of these packets that all you guys have because I represent many properties that are going to be influenced by this, and I don't have what you're referring to as page seven, eleven, fourteen, whatever. I've not seen it. I'm not sure if anybody else has seen it, but certainly you've seen it. So I think it's a map, if if there was a continuance for two weeks, they would be given opportunity for actual people to look at what you all are looking at and be able to have some sensible input. Because right now I can't have any sensible input into the project. I am hoping that this project won't be done, approved by the planning commission and then go to permitting process, and there's nobody in the town that's been hired as an engineer to behave, to look after the town's ordinances, to look at those plans, and the plans don't just go to somebody who says, okay, I'll stamp them. We want or should have an qualified engineer to review these plans that have been submitted by the hospital, and the engineer is looking at the ordinances of the town and making sure that the ordinances are being followed. And we don't get a permit like we have, we've had a permit issued to an apartment complex. And the plans, as far as I know, have not been looked at by an engineer paid or or representing the town's ordinances to make sure those plans meet are adequate to get a permit. It's not nice when we find out that a project builds its entire. It builds the entire sixty apartments and finds out that it doesn't have an entrance that has been approved by indot.
Sir, sir, if I may, we're getting a little off topic here. You are time limited, and we are twenty-five minutes over on this meeting. The town council meeting is up next, so if I can ask you to wrap it up, please.
I just want the town to hire a competent qualified engineer to review any plans by anybody else to make sure they follow the standards before a permit is granted.
Billy, no, thanks, sir. This is my shameless plug for our town website. It has the agenda for all these meetings on there. So that packet that that we're referencing is there, the newest one with the red lines we got. So that's why you probably saw me trying to go through two different ones, but that information is that.
Okay, any other public comments? If you would, sir, sir, if you would, come on up to the podium. Give us your name and address, please. Your name and address, please.
My name and address?
Please.
Thomas Smith, thirty-five eighty-nine, South Meadows Lane.
Go right ahead. Thank you.
Oh, the hospital, is it in the right hand corner?
Yes, sir.
So therefore Kroger's is going to sit on a side road or in the back of that hospital complex area?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I needed.
Oh, no problem.
Here, so I had to ask.
And thank you for asking. Any other questions or comments from the public? Okay, in order to open the matter for discussion amongst the plan commission, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 082025.
And that's on first reading.
On first reading.
I'll second that motion. So it's been moved and seconded. Now it's open for discussion. Yes. I'm sorry, what?
I don't think we have two readings of the plan.
That's that's correct. This is just, this is just for approval for consideration for the town council.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
I'm just so used to two approvals.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 082025 for recommendation to the council.
I'll second that motion. So now the matter's open. Is there any other questions, comments, concerns?
There's a couple of things that kind of, not necessarily with the nuts and bolts that we didn't talk about. One of the concerns I have is what impact does this have on Needlers, obviously. And certainly with this large of a grocery store coming in next door or nearby, it's 4X the size. You know, it's a credible scenario that Needlers goes out of business. So I think we, as a planning commission, need to consider what happens to that building and and discuss that. That was another reason I was considering the continuance, because that's something that, you know, none of us had talked about.
Any other questions or comments, concerns?
There might be concerns about Needlers. I think it will make, this will make them be possibly more competitive. I also think if they have, they have been booming, just booming. And I know that there will always be people who don't want to go to a grocery store, just because of the size. They don't want to walk that that much. And if Needlers, they still have the option to enlarge if if they're committed to to being here. I know right now, it's it's been packed. It's taken forever lately to get through there. So I think with as many neighborhoods, Hancock County has thrown at us lately.
Yeah, it'll certainly bring traffic here. That's another consideration to use, additional traffic.
Well, and I would like to make a comment that the fact that Kroger is working closely with the hospital and that there's a partnership there lends a lot of credibility to the project because there's a very good partnership between the hospital and the town. There's built in credibility from the very beginning. Everything that the hospital has ever said that they were going to do, they did. And we certainly appreciate that. With the language that was tweaked in here about the controlling developer, I have every assurance that the concerns that were made this evening will be worked out. It's not feasible or reasonable to expect for this evening, every single detail is going to have been ironed out. And that's that's not the case. But the concept of having a supermarket, a fuel center, the related uses, what that brings to our community, in my opinion, is fantastic. So I just wanted to state that.
Yeah, I appreciate the hospital. I appreciate Kroger, Kroger's willingness to come here. Everybody that I've talked to in the community is excited about it. Working with the hospital, the town, working with the hospital on this project gives us multiple layers of, or multiple stages. It kind of puts up some guardrails because they've already had to go through so much of a process working with the hospital. This just narrows down the process for us, in my opinion, and makes it a little bit easier because the standards were already set. So to me, it's a no brainer. And I would love to give the town more options. You know, we're growing. It is what it is. Some people may not like it. Everybody I've talked to has embraced it. So I look forward to this project.
You know, I also want to say that the hospital heralded, or ser, so, yeah, certainly the standards you guys already have makes is definitely is a positive thing to this whole process. So I want to echo that, too. I think if you look at, you know, my opinion, this is how I'm looking at it. And I've heard you guys say, wherever you talk to, you says you're in favor of it. I did a little survey of myself last night, knocked on a couple couple people's doors, and I talked to six of my, seven of my neighbors. Two were for it, three were against, and two were neutral. So I think there's a, there's a group of folks that that, and I've seen this on social media as well, kind of a split. So obviously, that's not, that's another reason I was wanting a continuance, because I want to have more time to to talk to folks and see if that was an aberration or not. I think also, the original UDP was for 50,000 square feet. I think the thought process at that time was to be a small town, to help with that small town community, that small town charm. That shows up seven, 10 different times in our comprehensive plan. So I would be much more in favor of this if it was twice as big as Needlers, rather four times as big, and likely put Needlers out of business. So that's, that's why we'll not be voting for the motion that's going to happen.
Any other comments?
I have one question, and this is, this goes out to to the Kroger folks. Whether or not it would even be feasible, or you would still consider if 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 you were asked to downsize, as far as not the size of the store, or possibly not as many pumps, is this a set layout, plan, square footage?
This is, this is the Kroger tech marketplace that we are building. This is what we, the research that we've done has all been based around this.
Business is business.
And is it based on the our population and the neighborhoods that have just cropped up so quickly lately in this area?
This is kind of our business strategy at this point. This is kind of the target where that we decide where that we generally. But when Kroger looks at an area, they look at not only existing town communities, they will go in and say, oh, okay, there's so many apartments that are going to start construction in or whatever, three levels. And there's a subdivision over here that's going to prove for 100 lots or whatever it is, right? So they look at the growth, not only residential growth, but also the retail growth and other employment things that are going in the region. So based on that, that is how they determine. That's my issue.
Is it appropriate for me to add, just 30 seconds? We have not brought to you a smaller store, which in the name, it doesn't matter. That was twice the size of Needlers that you would have liked. We didn't like it. That process and that partnership that we have, we're neighbors. We're in this community forever, right? We're part of the community and we love the community. We don't bring you everything that comes to us because we nixed it already. You wouldn't have liked it, just trust me. It was twice the size of Needlers.
Was it Kroger or was it somebody else?
It was not Kroger.
Somebody else.
I do, I did a little survey in my home. And I think it's okay to say, the negotiations we've done had a larger store on this one time. I talked to my wife about where we landed. She was very disappointed that it was not 123,000, 180,000. So I got in trouble for that.
Right.
So there's, there's two scales of this.
Sure.
So I, I, I think that we're getting a great product, a great company. Are there some things we're going to work on and make it even better? They don't want a moving target. And having been in the development world, anybody's in there, you got to appreciate that. They have some more due diligence time, but our goal is to end that moving target for them. Set the standard so that you're happy with us and we can continue a great partnership. And I have nothing but the utmost confidence that we can get that done because we wouldn't be here if we didn't feel we could work with that team. And we've got plenty of chances that that we would have figured that out. So I appreciate everybody's comments. I think this is great. We need to have this kind of input. But I think what we're getting here is is quality of a great level, and it's going to do nothing but promote the town. And it's going to continue to allow us to raise the bar like we promised you. And that's already seen. I don't know how it got out. The rumor did. We did not share it. It must have been Kroger that shared it.
Always blame a broker.
Our inquiries have increased since then.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
You know, we're, we're a family that shops at Needlers a lot, but we also shop other places because price, the amount of items and things that we want. So I'm excited to be able to keep our money here if this project goes through, so that we can do all of our shopping here and save time, save gas, get fuel points, all those things. I think our town is growing. And if everybody shopped at Needlers, I don't, they couldn't support the whole town. And with the growth, we're going to need something, something bigger.
I'm also excited for the job opportunities. So.
Absolutely. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries.
Bill, we know to adjourn still.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.